I don't know about that.
All right, tonight is Wednesday, August 18th at 7:00 PM. This is the regular business meeting for District 96. Anything you can call in.
Ms. Dunn?
Here.
Ms. Kleiber?
Here.
Mr. Marhal?
Here.
Mr. Muirhead?
Here.
Ms. Murphy?
Here.
And Mr. Hunt?
Here.
A quorum is present.
Okay, at this time, is there any public comment?
There is none.
All right, at this time, are there any proposed board member changes to the agenda? All right, and that takes us to the first item, next item, which is the superintendent's report.
All right, so I have a couple things on the superintendent's reports this evening. The first one being student enrollment, which is something we all pay very close attention to, particularly during the summer months. So just wanted to share that with all of you. As is somewhat typical this time of year, we have a number of kids that are leaving and going to other districts, and also a number of children that are coming. So it's kind of hard to fully capture the pieces of it, but I think what's important as you look at the three sections at Ames and three sections at Central, two sections at Life in kindergarten, first, second, and now third grade, and then still with one section at Hollywood, just an understanding of kind of the overall balance of our enrollments. The overall balance of enrollments is always kind of a unique challenge in Riverside as we continue to grow Blythe Park, and I think sometimes that assignment still comes as a bit of a surprise to some families, just as they kind of understand sort of their neighbors and neighborhood and where children on their street may be attending school. But I think that's, you know, slowly shifting over time, and we knew that would take some time for that shift to happen, but it certainly does seem to be alleviating some of the crowding that we had experienced at Central in previous years, where, you know, we also had even four sections of certain grade levels. So that doesn't seem to be a need. I think there's a lot of second graders across the district overall. But anyway, so never a perfectly balanced system, but I think improving over time with, particularly as we grow Blythe Park. I don't know if there's any questions about that in terms of overall enrollment?
It just seemed like overall, we seem to be down pretty much across the board. There were a couple exceptions, but I don't know if that's, we're expecting that to change any between now and the start of the year or earlier in the year?
It'll change a little. I mean, I would say probably even just from that, we have maybe five new students that came in, I think even just since the report was put together, maybe yesterday, between yesterday and today. I don't know. It's still an interesting question, it's an interesting question to know if there's any COVID impact with that, families that may have elected to just move toward homeschooling or something, or if this is maybe just a bit of a trend that we're seeing. So it's hard to know what to say about it overall, but you're right, I think it indicates that we're down, was it 28 children district-wide overall, and you're right, each grade level has a bit of a decline. We're down 13 children in kindergarten from previous year, and again, that is an area that we sometimes hear families, you know, expressing frustration that with it not being a full day program, it's something else, they need to pursue a program elsewhere. And then we often see those families don't come back in first and/or second grade, it seems. So. And then I'll move on. I have just our health and safety update. The board is very familiar, this I just, I did link the presentation that we had shared at our last two meetings. Again, this is no news or no surprise to the board, but I just wanted to make sure that the way of just sharing it with the public, and I think we've been able to get the word out effectively, but we will be returning to full in-person learning as the State Board of Education is requiring all early on school children to do, again, with those rare exceptions of children that may be medically fragile and need home hospital, or children that might be kind of uniquely eligible for the West 40 program. I will tell you, the West 40 program was approved by the state just this week. So I believe we have one family, maybe two, that will consider accessing that program. But again, a relatively small number. We are going to be returning to school, as you know. Everyone will be required to wear masks regardless of vaccination status, and that's linked now to the governor's mandate for that. Three-foot social distancing is going to be the most common, we'll socially distance a bit more when and where we can. We have been working with the University of Illinois Shield Saliva Screening Program, and as you probably know, they've committed to many, many districts in the area, so they have a very organized approach of an orientation process and a logistical process, and we are now getting to our operational process where we'll be walking our buildings on August 30th with the representatives from, actually, it's kind of a subcontracted healthcare agency that'll be managing the logistics for all of it. So they anticipate starting with us on September 3rd or maybe September 8th. So again, it won't be something that'll be starting right away at the very first day of school. Again, the unique difference there for everyone that's participated is the requirement that the samples must be collected, you know, in view of the person collecting them at school. So we know that's going to feel a bit different to our children to do that. We know, you all know that we're using this opt-out process, that parents have to explicitly indicate to us that they want to opt out. I think yesterday we counted, Kathy, right, the opt-out notices, I think there were about 63, so I think we're at about a 97% participation rate. I do anticipate that there could be a few other opt-outs yet coming, or there could be some that could change after, you know, a child has, you know, perhaps experienced it, they found out that's nothing, they, maybe something they're uncomfortable doing. The team is really willing to work with our early learners and work with our children with special needs and do what they can to coax and model and show children how to do it. So again, I think it's an important layer of safety for all of us. Certainly, I had already shared about, you know, HEPA air filters and accessing the outdoors, whether through open windows or getting outside, and good hand hygiene and good cleaning for everybody. So again, nothing new to this group, but wanted to share that so that people continue to understand what the school district has ready to go for next week. Any questions or comments about any of that? I know you're all very familiar at this point, so. And then the one other thing I just wanted to share is our Salt Creek Valley Sports Conference. The superintendent group met a week or two ago, and we have decided that we're going to move forward with our fall sports, and for us, that's girls volleyball and co-ed soccer. Soccer being outdoors, felt that that felt like a safe sport activity for children. Girls volleyball will be indoors, and they will be required to wear masks for that. So right now, all the school districts are eager to begin sort of sports and, you know, competition opportunities for the students. We are going to be limiting spectator capacity, and I think right now, we're thinking it would be only parents that would be allowed to come and spectate. We wouldn't be inviting students to come. I'm really thinking more volleyball while we're indoors, and spectators would be required to be socially distanced and masked. So that's it for the report. It doesn't seem like a lot, but there's a lot going on as we get ready to start school next week.
Most definitely. And thanks for noting the West 40 program. So I think when we were hearing before, we weren't sure how things were. Now that it's been approved, is, they're anticipating they're going to start on time or any delay in that?
I don't think they'll start with, consistent with our first day. I think it'll probably be after Labor Day. Again, because they're looking at a very individualized approach, and I think their approval maybe came a little bit later than they had anticipated, they're really kind of building the program as they go, which I know is a little bit frustrating. I'm like, one of the families is like, well, can you tell us more about it? And they're like, we're going to hire staff, we're going to work with your child, we're going to provide them with the academic instruction they need, as well as the social emotional support. That's, social emotional support's kind of a very specific piece of their program regardless of student need, just the idea that a child who may be remote now will need that additional support. Also, just with the goal of socially and emotionally supporting them to return to in-person school when that time is right.
You said currently only 3% have opted out right now, as of right now?
As of right now, yeah.
And I know with this being diagnostic in nature, has there been any further clarification? I haven't seen anything personally around like how that can be utilized with quarantining and stuff? Is there going to be more direction from the state on how we can do that?
Yeah, Pam, I may ask you, if you're listening to jump in with me, there's kind of a unique consideration right now of a test-to-stay protocol, which would mean somebody who's been exposed but is not presenting with any symptoms, obviously has masks and socially distanced, could they perhaps go through a testing protocol, whether it's with the saliva or with the Binox quick testing? And the Shield program is really offering to be able to bring both of them to us in terms of which one would be most appropriately usable for the situation. I think we're going to have to kind of live into some of those situations and figure it out, because they're also looking at the transmission rate within your area, and if the transmission rate is high enough, they would not allow a test-to-stay protocol. So we're kind of carefully listening to the Illinois Department of Public Health and the Cook County Department of Public Health, and noticing still that the guidance still seems to be kind of unfolding. But again, the goal with all of it, and even as you listen to the Department of Public Health, the goal is safety, obviously, safety from the virus, but it's also keeping kids in school as much as we possibly can. So right now, they're saying if there's an exposure, children are masked and three feet apart, they are not considered a close contact. So they would not have to go home on quarantine. If you recall, last year, we kind of were pretty broad in our quarantining, especially initially. The one time where that would be, you know, children might be considered close contacts would be at lunch, because they'll be unmasked at three to six feet, again, depending on the different school and the different configuration. So, and Pam, I don't know if you have other thoughts on the test-to-stay protocol?
Yeah, that's pretty much it. And I think Shield, from what they would say, would help us with all that, too.
Right. Well, Shield, and what we learned last year is our nurses would often just get on the phone with Cook County Department of Public Health or in an email and just really explain the situation and get specific consultation, because it does matter, sort of what was the exact setup of the classroom, what was the exact, you know, level of exposure, was the person they were exposed to, you know, symptomatic in any way? And again, I think there's an evaluation that goes into all of that, that it's hard to sort of put it just as a sort of black and white, you know, this is how we're going to do it or not. But our goal's certainly going to be to keep kids safe and then also keep them in school as much as we can.
Yeah, so it sounds a lot better, because it was very chaotic for everybody across the board, just what do I do, right? And it was always changing, but now that we know so much more about it, it sounds like our, if I heard you correctly, like our protocols right now basically will prevent any kind of like full-on classroom quarantine theoretically, because it would be masked, it would be distanced, and that qualifies as not a close contact, so we don't, we shouldn't be as subject to large quarantines like we thought we might be or were last year.
Right. The quarantines that I guess maybe worry would be the out-of-school exposures where kids aren't masked. And so that was certainly something that we were helping families navigate and navigating as a school district, because it certainly had a direct impact on us, is that if kids were together unmasked, somebody has COVID, we are, as you know, we're doing that contact tracing along with the Department of Public Health, and those children would probably be quarantined from school. But again, it's not going to be because of an in-school exposure. I think the in-school exposures, you know, will hopefully be very, very limited and unlikely, and that area we're going to have to be really careful and watchful about is lunch. And, you know, we're already hearing a couple families, not more than a couple, that have said, can I take my child home for lunch? We're not doing, as you know, the sort of arm twisting, but I think some families are planning to do that, which will only help us with our social distancing. And again, I'm not encouraging or requiring that, but just if families choose to do that, it's an option that's available to them always. And we'll see what, you know, how we're able to maybe, you know, even sort of extend our social distancing a bit at lunchtime.
No, see, I think there's a good clarification, because it's, I would just, so if there is an exposure out of school, which as far as we can tell, that's what happened last year with the out of school, and it didn't really transmit in school. So when we had those, every child that was around the other child ended up getting quarantined, but that should be less of an issue this year, I think, because of the protocols and what we know about what's going on, so.
Yeah, and I think it's, you know, it'd be the maybe three, four children that are kind of in the, as we kind of would say, in the orbit, and I think last year, as some of you know, especially at the beginning of the year, we quarantined whole classes or half of classes, and I think it was just that there was so little known to us, and you do, I get a sense listening to the Department of Public Health even and just listening to our own nursing team and planning, is that it feels much more kind of exact and more precise, so.
And not the lockdown, anything that has been, as you've always been last year, but you know, as of right now?
Yeah, as of right now, yeah.
That's what we know, so.
Will there be seating charts for lunch?
Yes.
Because how would you know, yeah?
Yeah, so there'll be seating charts. I know today I was over at Central, they were showing me the stickers, because it's bench seating, and they're going to sit on a sticker, you know, that you're only allowed to sit in these, on these little green circles, so just whatever we can do to make that really, really clear to our students. You know, the principals, we've talked about it quite a bit, and, you know, the thing that they were saying is most children eat really fast, you know, that's just kind of how kids do it at school, they eat and they get your mask back on, and, you know, one of the principals was saying, we'll also remind them that the time to be social is when you get your outside time. So the eating time is to eat, and that's what we heard from, I think, other school districts, too, is that lunchtime wasn't the, perhaps the social fun time, it's time to eat your lunch, and then maybe the social fun comes during the recess time.
I just have a quick question, just on the Shield program, you might not have these details until you meet with them August 30th. I'm just trying to think logistically how that is going to look week over week, particularly also as many of us are having conversations with our children, trying to lessen anxieties, prepare them for maybe what to expect out of testing at school versus, you know, me yelling at them to spit in the morning in my kitchen?
Yeah.
So I'm just curious, do we see it like a different grade every day? I know we used to be on a different schools every day system when we participated in the prior saliva testing, first thing in the morning, staggered throughout the day, like a big line, individually taken out, to the extent that you might have some of that info? If not, I'd be really curious once you do.
Yeah, so, and as soon as I have it, I'll certainly share it. We'll know more by the September 1st COW meeting for sure, but, so it's going to be a combination of that. So one thing we know is there's still that rule about you can't have eaten within an hour. So they're really clear, we're not going to show up at your school until 9:15 or 9:30 so that families don't have to get up extra early and eat breakfast and tell us, you know, what time they had breakfast, so that they are just kind of right out of the gate. Alleviating that is an area of concern, which was helpful to hear. Then the reason they're having, we're going to do what they call kind of a logistical walkthrough at each school. So they're probably going to come into this room with Mr. Gierman and say, could we line up your third and fourth graders pretty quickly and move them through? But they also talk about, and they call it the drool train, I will tell you, that's kind of their term, that they said particularly for early learners, maybe kindergarten, they will come up like with a cart, this is how, you know, this is what I'm envisioning, with a cart outside the classroom, and kids will come out kind of, you know, maybe three at a time, and walk in a little socially-distanced line and provide their sample. I will tell you this, it will be a disruption to the day. You know, I don't think there's any way to say that it's not. I just, you know, and I've thought a lot about that, and I think we've all agreed it's a trade-off worth having right now in the name of student safety, but we don't want it to impact the day, but even to move through one class, even when they're moving quickly, I think it's going to take 15, 20 minutes. But they would like, they would like to look at the large group spaces like this, gymnasiums, multipurpose rooms, and how could they move kind of a whole line? So potentially your child's class gets in a line, they all go through the line, you know, staying socially distanced and kind of moving quickly back to class, but some may go door by door. And that's what I kind of am curious, as they look at the setup of our school, is going door by door for each class maybe even more efficient than getting kids in a large group line. But that, those are things we're figuring out. But we don't have to worry about the eating. They describe, and I have not seen it, Pam also, I think Pam did as part of jury duty, so she, they have all shared it's a much larger tube. It has a much larger funnel, like if you recall, we did the little straw, I think you kind of spit into a funnel. What we're hearing is for some children, that's a lot easier. So we'll see, we'll see. But I can understand, and we put up a lot of FAQ information on our website, so there's, they're frequently asked question sets that come directly from Shield. I know there's talk about a video, they have a video up, the video is of an older student, so it's helpful to watch, but you don't, you kind of see her move through the line. I've asked if they could have more detailed video perhaps for us. It's very clear that they are very, very busy. I mean, I, because it is now free to all Illinois school districts, I think many, many school districts that were kind of debating are saying, yes, let's do it. So that's great, but I'm, you know, they have a lot of scaling up to do, it seems to me that they're doing it very, very quickly. So I will certainly share more and share more with our families through other communications.
I was just wondering, since you said it's available to so many districts, have you heard from the RV district, whether they're doing it or not? Because we have families that, you know, such as my own, that have an older child than a younger one, and it could kind of affect our own issues that...
I have not heard directly about RBC or Shield actually. I think, I know LaGrange 102, that had had the lab that we worked with last year, they're going to be doing Shield. I think some districts, I want, I don't really want to speak, but I think maybe Comarc, I think some are looking at like in case of an outbreak or maybe for sports programs. So some are doing a more kind of abbreviated approach. But I don't know about the high school specifically. I'll just add anecdotally that we had all of our new teachers in yesterday and today, and they're coming back again tomorrow, and our mentors came in and met with them today, and we did gather for a socially-distanced pizza lunch, and saw a lot of teachers in the building also just working on classrooms, and it just feels like teachers are really excited to be coming back, and it just has a very different feel than last year, when I think there was just a lot of fear and anxiety about the virus. So I think it feels very different already, looking forward to a really great school year with masks on.
All right, that is great to hear. All right, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Can the board secretary review the contents of tonight's consent agenda?
The consent agenda for tonight consists of meeting minutes from prior sessions of July 21st, 2021 closed session and regular business meeting, personnel report as presented, table's pre-list as of July 30th, 2021, table's pre-list as of August 18th, 2021, and the CEC Consulting Services meeting.
All right, is there a motion that the board approves of the consent agenda as presented? Excuse me.
So moved.
All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay.
I'm sorry?
Can we pull one item out first?
Yeah, absolutely.
The CEC agreement.
All right, we can set that aside for further discussion. All right, then is there a motion that the board approve the consent agenda subtracting the CEC consulting agreement as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Ms. Murphy?
Hi.
Mr. Marhal?
Hi.
Mr. Muirhead?
Hi.
Ms. Dunn?
Hi.
Ms. Kleiber?
Hi.
And Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Excuse me. Okay, so then, let's see, we will separate the CEC consulting agreement, I think we'll follow the same rules on that, so is there a motion that the board approve the CEC consulting agreement as presented?
No. Second.
All right, is there any discussion?
Yes, Martha, you've been pretty pleased with their work, but with regard to the description of the detailed tasks, can you give a little bit more background, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I know that I am, on what you're expecting from their work and their eight days of support?
Sure. So the, you know, CEC was the organization that helped us in the development of our strategic plan, really facilitated that whole process. And then they do make agreements with districts, which seems like a very valuable agreement for District 96 to engage in really what they call living the plan, this idea of continuing to work with us. I know they describe it as coaching and facilitation, so they've already come in and worked with us two half-days, I believe, working with our leadership team around establishing just our structures to get our action teams up and running. So I know we've shared some, and we'll be sharing more at the September 1st committee, the whole meeting, our identified goal champions, which are essentially our cabinet leaders that are in this room, and then starting to put together our action team leaders, who will be introducing themselves at our Institute Day on Monday. And for that, it's kind of an extension, it's our district leadership team primarily, our principals, and then also a couple key teacher leaders are also joining us to lead action teams. Teachers will all be invited to be part of action teams that are of interest to them, and they all relate very specifically to the strategies that are outlined in the plan. But specifically, the work of CEC is to work with us, to kind of keep us focused on the plan, to keep us focused on the kind of work, the, both setting SMART goals, also working through some of the key performance indicators. We've talked about having more discussion with the board, also about those key performance indicators. Right now, the ones we have are really just listed as kind of data that's readily available to us, that we currently use, but setting targets within that, again, is something that I look forward to talking with all of you more about. So again, I guess it's a strategic partner to make sure that we stay strategic and that we don't get too bogged down in our own day-to-day work. This is really professional development, professional services, so I did want to bring it to the board's attention because it's a, you know, relatively significant dollar amount, I don't want to make light of it, but it's something that we had budgeted for through our professional services. But again, because you all had a lot of, and certainly Dan and Wesley did, kind of direct contact with CEC, I wanted to make sure that you're all aware of this, of this plan.
Is it just for lunch consultants that were...
Do you think it'll stay that way, as is listed in there?
Yeah, I think it'll stay that way. So it's a woman named Arlana Bedard, and one of the reasons, too, in terms of setting up this contract is that they do contract with multiple school districts throughout the area, and so by having a contract with them, we're able to kind of commit to likely to be eight days. They said they're very flexible, they only bill us on days that they actually come and work with us, so if we end up needing them fewer days, we would be paying them less. If we felt there was a need to contract with them for more days, again, they'd be flexible and would consider certainly adding in those additional days. But I also know, I can't necessarily call them in October and say, we'd love to have your help. So they are really looking at setting up kind of annual agreements with school districts, so this seemed like an important proactive step to take. And yeah, we've been very happy with the opportunity to work with them.
I was thinking you might just answer a question that just popped in the air. So could we theoretically renew this for next year in the year, like, is it ongoing or are we kind of done after this first year?
We're done after this project. I mean, I think the Consortium for Educational Change does have, they have multiple sort of facets in terms of the way that they work with school districts around, whether it's committee work, professional learning communities, other professional development areas, they kind of have a lot of different components to their organization, specialists within their organization. They do curriculum work with some districts. They do, you know, certainly for us, it's been strategic planning and now living the strategic plan. So, you know, I think we would keep them in mind as a good partner, but there's no obligation beyond these sessions, and actually, these sessions aren't even obligated, it's only if we choose to use them, but it gives us the opportunity to kind of set those parameters, assuming that it's likely we would use all these.
If we wanted to, do we have that option or no?
To work with them in the future?
Yeah.
Yes.
Like if, like in year or two, if we had, just we're going to have a lot of stuff going on this year, so if we need to go into next year, is that an option that we could?
Right, but it's all new contract then, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Like Jim and I have talked with the budget, sort of keeping a line item, obviously for professional services in this area, and it's something we've always had, I think we're just a little more targeted right now on a partner that we're, we're working with, working with on our strategic plan, we feel very focused on that, and so, you know, my sense is it's really going to help us live the plan even more effectively.
And you do a great job of like getting, you know, other superintendent feedback, but sometimes there's like what they do specifically can be a really good one, and how we fit in and things like that. So I was just curious if there was an option to go?
Yeah, I think there would always be an option. That's their, that's kind of their sweet spot, I think, as an organization, just, you know, professional supports to, to leadership teams in particular. So I know, and we'll get into this more at the September COW, but our first half-day workshop with them, we did a, we took all our strategies, and they had us talk about sort of what are you doing right now, what do you really hope to be doing in five years? Now build your bridge, how are you going to get there? And write chapter one of your story, you know, like how, you know, how would you get started? And it was a really valuable workshop for our leadership team and the teacher leaders that were able to join us all in a half-day, you know, but it was just a really good kind of activity, a really good structure, I think, for us all to be thinking about in terms of future planning. And getting the strategic plan really living, and I think that's what we have all said is this plan sitting on a shelf will do us no good. This plan, you know, really being robustly lived here in our district will be valuable. And it is going to be a half of a half a day, a quarter of our Institute Day on Monday will be a rollout with our, with our whole District 96 team, so that they have familiarity, have a chance to really digest it, think about it, ask questions. So we're looking forward to that, too.
Martha, thank you.
No problem.
And there is significant value in having the extra knowledge to making sure that we are not putting this plan on the shelf and continuing to act upon it, and it's a little too much business-y talk, but definitely making it work and making those improvements and being pushed to do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill, for bringing it up, and to have a little bit more background on that. All right, any further discussion on this item? Are we ready to vote?
Yep.
All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay. Mr. Marhal?
Hi.
Mr. Muirhead?
Aye.
Ms. Dunn? Ms. Dunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kleifer?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
And Mr. Hunter?
Aye.
Will you pass it?
All right, next on the agenda, is there anything from the Riverside Education Council? Okay. Next up then, our board member comments. How's everybody's back-to-school shopping going?
I hope I'm prepared for this.
I know.
All right, then we'll move on to committee reports. First up is the Education Committee.
Yeah, just a brief update. We met Monday with Martha and Angela, Sherry and I did, just started talking about the September Committee, the whole meeting, and just had a good conversation about how we're going to start presenting the strategic plan and what we're gonna, how we're gonna maneuver through that. So, yeah.
Yeah, I know, there's a lot of topics, as you know.
It's obviously an important part of our district, but we're trying to really manage how we can have a flexible conversation, but still have it be informative and cover all the things we wanted to cover. So I think you'll be excited, there's a lot going on. So, we'll talk about that next time.
All right. Definitely an exciting time of year for them. All right, and next up is the Policy Committee.
So not much to report right now. The Policy Committee is actually meeting next week to review the most recent press bundle, so we will have more to report out at the September Cow or the regular business?
Yeah, I think we'll add it to September Cow. So we do have, yeah, Stephanie said we do have a new bundle to take a look at that we kind of postponed from last meeting, too.
Yeah, and it just includes like the, you know, policies recommended for review every five years, some potential language update to some existing policies, and perhaps, if I'm understanding it, one potential new policy for the district, but more to come.
Okay. Not this thick, a little closer to this.
Yeah.
All right. Sounds good. All right, next up then is the Finance Committee, which I think David is out this week. Then that will take us to the Facilities Committee.
Sure, thanks, Dan. We met last Friday, the 13th. Still a good day to meet. Hollywood is in progress. The, most of the remaining work right now is at the building. They're waiting for materials. They're still seeing delays from COVID and waiting for basically stuff to arrive, but that is anticipated to be finished by the end of September. With that said, the rest of the building is ready to be occupied by our students, and appropriate safety and blocking has been, is either, has been installed or is being installed so that the kids won't even notice that it's there. There were only a couple of minor change orders so far. The one that was probably of most interest to people was the removal of some additional material from an old oil tank. And that was basically, they removed a tank many years ago, about, what, 1990, Martha?
Yeah, 91.
So about 30 years ago, and they left a few pieces of pipe behind, and so those needed to be removed because there was still some actual oil in them, but that was all pulled out. The fire marshal witnessed it. The, it was, the soil that was left behind was tested, and there's all kinds of good testing information in the agenda, but, say that again?
I said, yeah.
Yeah.
I remember that.
All kinds of good stuff, but...
Not great items, but fun to read.
The ultimate result is that everything that they tested came up normal parameters, which is what we want, and the contractor could close it up, and we're good to go, and they were going to repave and be done with the exterior of the Hollywood parking lot. At Central, the installation of the sprinklers went well, and actually, it was tested last week. There was one valve that had not been replaced and needs to be replaced. I don't know if that was finished or not.
Did you think that was finished, the new valve?
Yeah, I don't, it doesn't matter. Ultimately, it was, it was on order. Riverside Fire was going to approve the testing, knowing that as long as it was replaced, it was considered operational. And most of the allowance was not spent, so that is money that returns back to our budget. So all good. The other, so then we are back to long-range considerations. One of the items you'll see on the agenda today is a, an agreement to have DLA do some initial scoping and concept work, looking at potential ideas for that extra classroom at Blythe. We have told the architect to get in front of the historic commission, in front of Riverside, to see what would be acceptable at that building. So the architect will have to put their thinking caps on. The contract is time and materials, but it does have a cap, and that's a pretty reasonable way to go. Gives them some freedom, but not too much freedom to do their work and put time into it. Was there anything else you wanted to say on Blythe, Martha?
I think that's it.
Next, we have, we've been thinking about this facility assessment, and certainly at this point, with what we've seen, definitely leaning towards, and I think we've come very close, 90% committed to engaging in a different firm to do a real in-depth assessment of our buildings and their components, to try to make sure that we don't have any surprises in the future.
Different than DLA?
Correct.
Not a different architect, a different firm that does the city facilities.
I'm talking about just, is it similar to life safety or is this going to...
One at a time. When I was on with Mitty, that firm would do during the summer, because I wouldn't be interrupting classrooms.
Yeah, that's, I was kind of, I was wondering like how, is it a big storm that comes in and all the buildings have it, or is it one at a time?
It's probably one at a time, just because there's only so many people they have on staff.
Yeah, okay.
So they would just, one person goes through and looks at the boilers and looks at each building in turn.
Okay.
And we discovered something with the Hollywood roof, that it's, the area near the new portion is in pretty bad shape. So, because in Ramesh's eyes, that it looks fine, but the roof is dry and it's getting crumbling, so it caused some problems as part of the renovation work. So that's something that they should capture because they're doing more than just looking at it.
Well, it's quite obvious that last, well, there's no way a fire pump should have been overlooked, and it's right there, you can see the reports. Like, so the fact that they did that does really...
Yeah, but the piping, for example, like the piping, and the piping was one of those things that you only find when you run water through it, and that's, that a visual inspection would never find. But your point is good, is there's aspects of what was done before where maybe it was too easy, or they were relying too much on old information and not really digging deep into it.
That'd be my only thing as we go forward. I mean, it might not be, you know, quote-unquote cheap, but somebody that's really going to get in there and look at everything, I think is...
Given all the experience we've had with that, a year after, so it sounds like a wise precaution to take.
Yeah, a project manager friend of mine just like casually brought this. It wasn't even, I wasn't even talking about this, but he made the comment about, he's on a board of something else for whatever, and he was talking about the boiler. And they're like, oh, it's going to be 20 grand to do this. And they're like, well, we don't want to pay that. He goes, well, it's going to be 250,000 in five years when it breaks. Oh, okay, well, we'll pay the 20,000 now. So just, maintenance has its benefits.
And that's maintenance and insurance, and that's a little bit of what we would be paying for, is that we have someone who says, yes, this should last another 10 years.
Right.
And knowing that at year seven, we really should, it better be in the budget.
Yeah, exactly.
The other thing that's been happening at Central and Hauser is there was a review of the sewer pipes, the drain pipes that are in the back parking lot, and they did discover some areas that were not working properly anymore. I, the word failing is too strong. It's just age, it's, things are settling. But, so Ramesh is going to look at that report some more, or review the results of it, I should say. But that inspection of the underground work will definitely, and we had a long discussion about this, and Martha can jump in here, too, when I forget something, it will inform any future plans we have for the parking lot, and potentially, because there is some repair work that needs to be done, some, replace some pipes, it could have, it'll impact what we think we should be doing and what, what the ultimate scope of that project should be or could be.
You think, like, water drainage?
Water, water, regular stormwater and some of the sanitary lines are, basically, they're sagging, so they should be flowing downhill, not towards Dan and Martha, but that way. And now they've sunk a little bit in spots, so they don't drain properly. They'll still function, but they've gathered a lot of crud and had to be cleaned out, and so that needs to be addressed.
Joel, what's the age of those? Are they similar to the sprinkler system?
Um...
Do we know?
Part of the building?
I would guess that they're, a lot of them are from the original building.
Yeah.
And over time, things just need to be fixed. But some might be new, depending on what they did with that parking lot 100 years ago. Probably, I would guess, speaking from a limited amount of judgment, that any of the sanitary lines have probably never been replaced because there was no need. So that, that information will inform our future plans for Central and Hauser and that place-based parking lot needs. Actually, Martha, I'm going to push number three to you for celebration of our work, because you will be better informed. The other consideration that we have is we're continuing to look at the auditorium at Hauser. We know that it needs to have a certain amount of equipment replaced, but the first thing that needs to happen over there is an assessment of the electrical, how good it is, what would need to be, what it is right now in order to, to parrot something you just said, to build that bridge to what we want to do. And then also looking that what, for what we want in auditorium, in the auditorium, excuse me, how much, what are we really trying to serve, what is, what is the purpose of the room? We are still serving a, an elementary school and all of the functions that is there. So we're not looking to create a studio-worthy I think that covers most of what we discussed last week.
Yeah, I'll go down to the celebration, so, you know, we were going to have a ribbon cutting here at Ames back in the, near the beginning of the school year, and we pushed it till October, thinking things would definitely be better with COVID, and things were not any better, and we canceled it. So we have never done any kind of celebration, celebration with all of you, celebration really with the whole community. The whole community has certainly put up with the schools being construction zones, neighbors and, you know, parents. I know Todd Gierman was saying that parents will come in for the meet and greet, and it will really be the first time that parents have been in the building. So we also know Central is fairly transformed, and Blythe, and when Hollywood is done, I think we'll also feel very different and exciting. So, you know, we've been debating when we can do it, if we should do it. So we do want to celebrate the work of the community and the board. I know, I think some of you noticed the meeting we were, when we were here last time, there are lovely plaques that are hung somewhere over there, right, that acknowledge all of you and your role with this. So I think it's something the community should celebrate and our district should celebrate. It's just COVID has kind of punched a hole in that good idea, and still thinking about the best way to do it. So again, just if you have thoughts or even ideas you'd want to share tonight, we're happy to play on accordingly. We're just, we're also a little bit in hesitation mode. I'm looking at Kathy, because you bought that giant scissors last year.
Yeah.
We've never been able to cut the ribbon on the new schools, and yet we are the new school additions and modifications renovations. But I don't know, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to know the right time and the right place, now that we have four schools that have been somewhat significantly modified, renovated.
Even outdoors is better than indoors, although right now is only hard to imagine it's the right time.
Yeah.
I would agree with that. I don't think it's the right time, though, unfortunately. I think we revisit it in the spring.
Yeah, yeah, maybe it's the spring. I mean, yeah, we'll keep, we'll keep it on the agenda for Facilities Advisor to keep thinking about. So, and just know that I think we appreciate the community putting up with it, and certainly the support with all the taxpayer dollars that we put into it. And I think, you know, they're really enhanced and improved spaces for our students, and that's what we wanted, and it's been great. So looking forward to at least being able to have parents in. I think, I think that part, you know, we feel like, you know, with masks on and social distancing, people can come in and see buildings. I mean, as you know, last year, it was just, as we were trying to figure out exactly how this virus, you know, spread or didn't spread, we were, you know, extremely cautious, and we will still be very, very cautious, but we also won't be quite as, the door won't be quite as closed.
I'm sorry, though, if I can circle back just to a couple things. Jim, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Did you say that, that last sprinkler was, was replaced, or was, is it still pending?
It's still, we don't have a timeline on it. We don't...
Okay, so no timeline on it?
The valve, is that what?
Yeah, I believe so.
I don't, I don't know, Dan. I don't, Ramesh would know the answer to that.
Okay.
And I, I was looking to put the cost into the board book, and we didn't have it yet.
Okay.
He originally, Ramesh originally said it was supposed to be replaced this week, so it may be that he just didn't send you that yet, at least according to my notes.
Yeah, nothing in writing. Is this a single head?
No, it was a valve that...
Full of valves?
It was a valve. It was not a head. It was, because the Hauser and Central systems were interconnected, this was a valve that didn't open properly. But he had it, he had it as an emergency replacement, so the part was available. It was going to be installed. I just, I don't have direct knowledge of talking to Ramesh lately.
I guess not, not anticipating a classroom disruption whenever it comes in?
No, no, it would be in the basement.
Oh, okay. Not something overhead, then?
No.
I guess, similar question on the Hollywood, because it sounds like things are not necessarily ready for the start of the year. Is there a timeline on that?
End of September was what he anticipated.
Okay.
That was the, I don't remember exactly what was still on order.
Well, the playground equipment hasn't arrived yet, or the pieces of playground equipment.
No, I was referring to the building.
Yeah.
The playground, I thought, was October-ish, right?
I thought the playground was end of September.
That's what I thought Ramesh did.
Yeah, yeah.
Not special.
Correct.
All right. My last question, I don't know if it's better here or in the old business discussion, but in terms of a new addition for Blythe, I'm wondering how much of our previous addition or discussion around that has led us here?
I think where we're at right now is the intent to make this a two-section school, and one more classroom was necessary to have to, to have space for two of each grade. The current question that is not yet determined is exactly what is the best strategy and whether or not the, how much work should or could be done in the auditorium to make that viable versus depending on kind of the response from historic, is that even in the cards? Like, would it be too disruptive to the look and feel of the building, for lack of a better term, where they just say, yeah, this doesn't, this doesn't really work for the building? really work for the building. As you know, we, we live in a, what most people consider a historic village, and that building in particular is on the National Register, I believe. It was one of the first modern schoolhouses that Perkins and Will did in the 40s. And so it's, it's actually considered to be a really fine example of what modern school spaces could and should be. Much more open to light and space than, than things that had been there before. So that's, that's a consideration as well.
And all these are kind of still moving pieces, as we know, that, you know, where will we not be doing full-day kindergarten? You know, that would require one extra room. Have you, have you been at Blythe? The room that the children eat lunch in, we call the multipurpose room, it's really an extra classroom. It's really not any larger than a classroom. That could easily become an additional classroom if, let's say, the renovation is more of creating a flexible space. So one of the ideas is create a space for art, music, and lunch, kind of similar to what we're doing at Hollywood, real honestly, so that then all the other spaces become available as classrooms, and I think that would then get us to that true, you know, two-section assignment. As we know, there's all these things that we have done in the past and continue to do, continue to do in terms of combining spaces. Right now, music is being taught in the auditorium. But it's, you know, we're, we're teaching kind of right up next to the stage, it works okay. But, you know, is there a sort of a more flexible way to do that? And as I said, could it also be art? So you have to kind of, I go back over the floor plan periodically, and I think, once we know what renovation would even, what might even be possible, right? And that's really the very first step with historic preservation, because if it becomes really limited in our possibilities to do that, then, you know, there's ways we can kind of live within our current floor plan, too. It's just that we, we kind of go to being tight in the way that we've been trying to alleviate ourselves from being tight at the other schools, so.
I think what Martha just said is, is kind of the message you should take from this, is this is exploratory in seeing what's possible, and it's not a commitment towards any single goal at this point.
Right, because there's no point in touching anything else, because we know.
Exactly.
On architect plans, if they wouldn't allow it, so I love that it's exploratory, let's see what they say, and that's definitely the right approach.
And we, we had a long discussion about giving DOA so much latitude and then stopping, and then we get to control the process, and so that's what this does.
All right.
I am thrilled at how cheap the oil tank thing was because Ramesh came in, what was that, a month or so ago, and it sounded.
Yeah.
It sounded, it sounded very expensive. He didn't have a price tag on it last time, so seeing that it was only, whatever, 14 grand, I'm like, whoo. Felt like we dodged one there, that could have been, that could have been really expensive.
It could have been much more costly. I think really what this, the, the reason for this is because somebody didn't do a great job 30 years ago. And they just, they kind of took the big part out and left the little random bits in, and then, because we poked the dirt, we discovered it again, so.
We just drenched it 30 years.
All right. Thanks, Joel. And then next is the personnel committee.
Nothing major. Martha, I've been trading emails on different topics and things related to a strategic plan. But we haven't, that's, I think sometime over the summer, kind of prepping for, well, we came with recommendations for a couple new positions for this school year, so we probably won't have anything for the September call with anybody October, I don't actually use the date, so I'll work on that this week and try to get something set up, and maybe we get a recurring one back on the calendar like we did last year.
Yeah, and I think, as Wesley just said, we're, we want to frame out the strategic plan for the board in multiple ways. And Sheri, you said it's kind of all about education, of course, but, you know, what educational changes would have? Personnel ramifications, personnel, of course, financial. So just trying to provide as much sort of detail that we can as we look at all these different goal areas and what working for those goals will mean.
Well, Martha, I, I do believe we're keeping the same long-term substitute plan that we did last year. Is that correct?
For the permanent subs?
Yes, for the permanent ones. I really, I really think that's a great idea, considering the shortage of substitutes sometimes. And I, I was happy to see, you know, the personnel report, that we have people always looking for, you know, substitute positions or peripros, and so.
Yeah, and Wesley, thank you, because you helped clarify, let me clarify for a little, a long-term sub is often, the person that goes and fills in the play maternity leave is often the most common. And then the permanent sub is that new position we added, where they would be assigned to a building and be there to be a sub, kind of known to the children. A lot of schools do it, it kind of becomes a very effective way to kind of jump in and fill in, and. But we also set up those days, we don't need them for a vacancy because somebody is out. They also would be somebody who might go in and sort of co-teach in a classroom that might have larger enrollment, or even do some small group intervention with children. So again, I think they become really part of, you know, the goal is they really become an integral part of the staff, they really know the children, and start to do more than just being a substitute, so.
Do you, and not that you know everybody necessarily how they got placed, but do you know if we have some of the same permanents of this year? I'm just curious.
Some, I think, I'm trying to think, I think the same one at Hauser, and, help me, Angela's nodding. But I think everybody, a couple of, so the other thing that happens, oftentimes a permanent sub is somebody who's looking for a permanent.
Of course, of course.
Somewhere else, so sometimes they don't stay with you longer because they landed at a different.
No, and good for them, no, I was just curious if we had some that.
Same at Central, but no, it's a.
No, it's, a couple buildings hired people that have been employed in the district in other roles, and now are going to be permanent subs instead of those other roles.
Great.
So familiar faces.
So they'll know, the kids will recognize them and the teacher, yeah, great.
Principals are really excited about this as an option within the buildings, too.
Just out of curiosity, did any of the permanent subs from last year become permanent employees this year?
Not with us.
Not with permanent subs, but a long-term sub did become a full-time employee.
Okay.
Yeah. And some of our permanent subs became long-term subs promoted last year.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, Wes.
Yep.
Okay, next item is old business. First item under old business is the Blythe Park MOU for possible expansion. Is there a motion that the board authorize the architect to provide professional services for the project identified herein, which professional services shall be subject to all terms and conditions of the master agreement B-101 unless specifically provided otherwise in the memorandum of understanding?
Some.
Is there any discussion?
I think we already have it, right?
I believe we did, yeah.
Just to act through, because a lot of this. I remember when I first came on the board two years ago, we were talking about, we'd been talking about two sections for a while, but I'm just kind of curious why this wasn't part of the process? Like, why was this set off as a separate thing? Too complex?
Anything that involves the auditorium is complex, and I know that ultimately, if, right now, that auditorium has a, an angled floor. And so that could result in some significant structural changes, which are much more costly. So it really was never in the program then.
Yeah.
To look at, and we really thought we needed to look at it more. And also, there's some, some community members who really have a lot of reticence to changing that up too much, so that's something else we kind of, we're being respectful of.
Yeah, gotcha.
I think if we got to that point in the program, it was just a lot more to explore, which would hold up everything else, so we knew it would have to happen, but we just weren't, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, because I remember some of that.
And money, and money was kind of a factor.
Thank you.
So one thing we talked about, facility advisory is sort of parameter-wise or conceptually, is that in some ways, these, these projects now become part of the new five-year plan, that they were, I guess you'd say intentionally put on hold or only mildly considered, and then because of cost, because of complexity, I think of the Central Hauser exterior, both costly and complex, Blythe, also in the additional renovation, we just don't know, right? So this, this MOU is really a first step in figuring out what's even possible.
Any further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Yep.
All right. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Ms. Dunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
And Ms. Schumacher?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, next are the Hollywood construction change orders. Is there a motion that the board approve the change orders for the Hollywood Elementary School project recommended in the school district's owners, representative, August 12th, 2021 memo to the board? And, do I have to say this whole thing?
I think so.
And further move that the board find the change orders are necessitated for the following reasons. The circumstances set to necessitate the change in performance were not reasonably foreseeable at the time of the construction contract was signed. Two, the change is germane to the construction contract as signed, and three, the change order is in the best interest of the school district and authorized by law.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
No.
No.
Stephanie, do I get a continuing loss credit for reading that out?
The, the change, Dan, the change orders involve some extra work that was required due to the, getting the permit from the Village of Brookfield, as well as some, as we continue to discuss, everything underground ends up being a little bit of a surprise. So there was some extra work there. And then, as, when they were doing the addition portion, they discovered that buried in the ceiling there was some electrical conduit and routing that needed to be moved out of the way. And as Ramesh notes in the memo, that was, the electrical work was unknown because you would have to demolish things to even see it.
Mm-hmm.
So it was not visible to the contractor, so the contractor could not have reasonably foreseen it.
And I was somewhat surprised to see that Village of Brookfield required some changes. I was under the impression, I guess the false impression, that things were, had been set in place? Was there just something that came through as a result of the discoveries, or?
No, I, this says during building permit review, which means we had never taken the, that portion completely through Village of Brookfield permitting process, their buildings department, because we didn't have the agreement with Hollywood House yet.
I guess things, yeah, that didn't come down to the wire.
So this, this portion of the work is because there were changes that they required that we would not have previously learned about because we did not have a permit review. We knew about some items, but this is more with regards to drainage and, actually, it's almost all drainage.
Did see a lot of talk about trenches, I guess that makes sense.
Trenches and catch basin and perforated PVC. It's all stormwater items.
Mm-hmm. All right. Any further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Yep.
All right. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Ms. Dunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
And Ms. Schumacher?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Next on the agenda is the review of intergovernmental agreements. First one listed is Village of Riverside Parks and Recreation.
Yeah, so I'll just kind of explain why this is here. So a while back, and I think it was Dave Barzati, and I know he's not here tonight, had suggested in the board was an agreement that just taking an annual look at all the different intergovernmental agreements we have would be valuable. These, these agreements tend to exist until they are discontinued for, for some reason. So again, this is not even an action item. It's really just an opportunity for the board to sort of recall the, the variety of agreements we have with different governmental entities. Really, the new one is the Riverside Brookfield High School Agreement for the orchestra teacher that we're sharing. But the others with the, with the police, with the village for the before and after care. And then there is a partial agreement related to the crossing guards, which is about Riverside District 96. I know it mentions Brookfield in there, too, because it's the, it's, because it's the crossing guard that's at Riverside Brook, over by Riverside Brookfield High School, is shared by all three entities, so. So again, if there's discussion, but again, it wouldn't be, if these are not set up as an action item to vote to discontinue any of them, it's really just a review process for the board.
Has there been any issues or any kind of disagreements or problems that have arisen over the last year or so?
There really have not. I mean, I know the board has always been very sensitive to the reciprocal reporting agreements with the, the police, police entities. I feel like those have been, you know, strong relationships, and knock on wood or something, you know, our, our student discipline issues, et cetera, concerns where we had to engage with the police were essentially non-existent last year. So, so no, I mean, no, no concerns. I know we've, we've talked about the before and after care, you know, last year, the before and after care with Riverside Parks and Rec also moved into just serving a very small number of children off-site. They'll be back to working onsite in, in that way. And I know the board had also heard about concerns related to the half-day kindergarten and other care options. And my understanding is they've been able to address the students that have requested after care for kindergarten. I know that's somewhat different, sort of an aside or a tangent related to the Riverside Parks and Rec agreement. So yeah, the short answer is no, there have been no concerns. And maybe there is.
So the Parks and Rec agreement is able or flexible enough to move along with those changes that have occurred with the Parks and Rec program?
Yeah, I mean, this program doesn't really speak to the, the kindergarten care, because that's something that's something they do off-site, the before and after care is really for, although I think now they are going to, if you have a kindergarten child who needs to come before school, or an after kindergarten student who would need to stay after school, that will be an option for those families.
This one appears, this particular one appears to be very specific to COVID, so that was not related to their after care program, but just how we needed some assistance from them with what is still going on, I guess, it seemed to be still going on.
This is the amendment, yeah.
Anyone have any other questions on that? All right, are we good to move on to the next agenda item?
Yeah. I think it's pretty yearly, we can make sure we know what, but I don't think there's any.
But just remind, I think we've got to put the original agreement with Riverside Parks and Rec, we have the amendment there, we have to put the original agreement on, so, yeah.
Is each part of the stuff we were starting to kind of attach is like a, here?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. That's, that would be the one spot.
So that, this should mimic that, but it sounds like we have just one little.
That's a little bit, that's right, there you go.
All right, well, the next item on the agenda then is the board, board, board and board superintendent agreements from August 4, 2021. This is an action item, is there a motion the board approve the board, board and board superintendent agreements as presented?
Some move?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I'll just say, we had a lot of debate over very little things in here, but I think the conversation was very, I, I personally thought the conversation was good, I think it's good to get that opportunity to really just be completely candid with each other about things that are going on and kind of see where everybody sits and all I guess, I, I thought at the time was well spent, several hours, but I thought it was well spent.
We did go, we, we came early and stayed late, but I agree, I think it was time very well spent, and I think it was great just to talk with everybody and, and have a, an open share of ideas and also, you know, what, what, what people might have thought of things over the past year, what things needed to change, and, and what could stay the same and what was working well, I mean, in my line of work, we make, we have something called a retrospective, is something we do every two weeks, it's a shame that we have to save all this up for one year, it might, it would be great if we could do this.
Two years.
Every two years, that's right, we didn't do one last year.
We, we should make sure that we do a couple of evaluations every year, I think we have various.
Yeah.
Conversations, so.
Yeah, it's definitely, definitely was time well spent, and a lot of, a lot of points to discuss, a lot of things, and, and also good to have someone from, I'm forgetting the acronym, but.
IASB.
IASB. Just if nothing else, I remember at one point just asking that question of like, you know, how, how does everybody else do this, or are we doing this right, and, you know, sometimes the answer was, well, maybe you're doing things a little different, so that's, that's good to, to kind of.
Evaluation is important, so.
Very much so. Very much so, so, yeah, I was definitely glad that we could do that, and we most definitely want to put that on the calendar for at least an annual event.
Yeah, that's actually, thank you for noting that, because I think typically we think about it after an election year, but I, I think they would do it annually, if that's something we'd like to do, I'll just maybe kind of get on their radar for, you know, a year from now.
Yeah.
But I think part of the point we didn't do it last year is because.
Yeah.
We were in pandemic, right? Committee, David and I, and.
Right, right.
I think for different, you've always done it every two years, but yeah, I want to be part of that, but this is only my third one, so, yeah, so I'm thinking, I thought.
I really agree doing it every year.
Yeah, I thought it was a very fruitful number of days, and it was great every year.
Yeah, I mean, teachers do subvaluations, administrators do, Martha does, so it makes sense that we would do one, too, it's part and parcel for education, so.
Well, that's essentially, I mean, that's essentially what it is, right, like our own self.
It's absolutely appropriate, yeah.
Great.
What's everybody doing in a year from five to 10?
Five to 10, who, writing up that?
I'm on vacation.
All right, well, any further discussion?
Nope.
All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Mr. Schumacher?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, and then next is the new business discussion, and there is.
Only meeting.
Just about where you want to meet.
Okay, that's what that is, okay. New business discussion, board and committee meeting locations for 2021.
So I know Kathy's been setting up the, I'll just jump in, sorry, setting up the calendar, and I know we've been meeting in this room, I think we found that this is a room that's pretty easy to socially distance and still have kind of a decent ability to hear each other. The Hauser library is where we've typically had board meetings and then committee of the whole meetings rotated to the schools, and I'm just, again, sort of, we can stay here for another year, we know it works for us in terms of distancing and mask wearing and acoustics, and we could also kind of start the rotation if that's something the board would like to do, if the board would want to return to the Hauser library, we might be sort of slightly less socially distanced, but if you recall, we were really shooting for at least six feet back a year ago, and then through the last school year, we might be as comfortable three feet at this point in time, I think we've kind of literally inched a little closer together, but just curious, you know, board, board thoughts on that.
Kind of thinking about sort of the discussion we had on the thing we just last approved, it might be worthwhile going back to the Hauser as like committee of the whole, and maybe here for like a more formal setup with presentations or whatever it might be, but no, I kind of like the idea of having more of, like, being encircled and having more of a dialogue, like working session type things, which I guess we could do here as well, but I think there's more work with windows over at Hauser in case we need it.
Right, that we can get good, you know, fresh air going in there.
I hope it doesn't need any.
I think if we set up, like, we'd be a little bit less socially distanced, I think whether we stay on six, six feet here, and we'd probably go three, are people comfortable going to three, I mean, that's what we have set up for our students.
Actually, no, you're probably eight, because these are eight-foot tables.
And then some?
Yeah, it could be.
I don't think you guys are eight feet apart, so, there you go.
What are some of the reasons we used to rotate the count to every school?
We actually have it in policy, that the board, it's a way of kind of visiting, you know, being in the different schools, and, again, during normal times, the principal from that school would often do like then just a brief greeting, so it was kind of an opportunity to maybe even learn, you know, see that other school, learn a little bit more about that school and just be present, so, again, I think maybe some of the idea behind is if there were parents from a school community that maybe wanted to give public comments specifics to that school or something, again, I think it was.
Close to them, yeah.
Yeah, because when we first were on the board, it was, everything was at Hauser.
Always at Hauser.
And then we kind of moved towards, let's, let's rotate it around just for access issues, so that a parent who's most comfortable going to life has the opportunity to attend a meeting at life, and then the board could also be in the building so that they have a little more connection to the building, so I think that was the reason.
Definitely would be agreed for the principals, they'd be great to hear what's going on in their school, and then sometimes they'd have a teacher talk about the program in that school.
Yeah, so it was the opposite of what you were proposing, it was committee of the holes at the location.
Right.
Regular boarding.
At Hauser.
But we talked about committee of the whole maybe being set up for more discussions, I think what you're saying is, is it easier to kind of literally put the tables together?
Yeah, we figured out here this is a, we wanted to try to do, I think it feels like it'd be tighter when we can't, probably can't use Hollywood at the current state.
Yeah.
No.
Remember the last time we were being in Blithe, it was, I mean, we were right next to each other.
Blithe is hard.
I don't think that would be approved for.
So is it easier to do committee of the whole in a more collaborative setting at Hauser and then do the business meetings at schools?
Oh, in a.
Because I think there's still validity in going to each of the schools.
Yeah, I disagree with that. Can we stick with current restrictions on how far apart we need to be, or, well, I guess indoor, that's just for schools, is three feet, I guess it's not really.
Three feet mask, so.
Right, for students, but not, I mean, we could all be right next to each other if we want to, and that's not breaking any current executive order.
Or is it easier at this point while we're still in COVID to stay in one location?
Yeah.
You know, for, for, you know, for maintenance, for scheduling.
I mean, we're, we're in a wave at the moment, will this wave go down, it seems like experiences in other countries would suggest that this wave will receive at some point.
Right. I, I mean, what I'm trying to say, it might just be easier just to stay here for now, and then in three months, three months, if you may begin to start moving back around, but I feel like, you know, maybe this is just a decision that's easier to decide than later, I know you're making the calendar now, so that maybe isn't helpful.
I tend to agree with Linda, I think, I think this works for now.
Either this or go back to Hauser and you just want, just one location.
Maybe we just move a table or something, but I do like the idea.
Yeah, you can definitely do something in here, because there's obviously room to circle, so.
I, I honestly could see a lot of value in, in going back to the Hauser library for being close together, I also think it's very valid that at some point we start going around to the schools, individual schools again, and hearing those presentations that we've been missing.
Oh, I completely think that, I just think maybe in the, you know, you know, we're still in the heart of the pandemic, so I just don't know if these are like the most pressing decisions, is all it.
Does anybody want to go back to the Hauser auditorium when we had people on the stage?
No, that's the one place I can't.
No, it's very difficult to hear.
No, I love it, I don't want to say, I love the auditorium, I, I, it's hard to hold a meeting when you guys are up on a stage and the camera's down, like.
That was literally for acoustic.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was not on the board at the time, but watching that also was very difficult to watch.
Yes, I had like a really bad neck hang after one of them.
Turning around to the stage, hard to hear.
Like, it was just not nice for me.
So I guess we know one thing we're not.
Yeah, one thing we're not.
No.
But I guess, well, I, I don't know if, if, if this is something to be revisited in three months, but I, I think it might be of consideration to revisit once this current wave, assuming this current wave passes, and yes, we'll knock up for mica or whatever, not for mica, plastic, and, yeah, if, if we get to a place where things are feeling a little bit closer to normal as we had maybe a couple months ago, perhaps that would be a time for discussion.
I, I'm with you with that.
Yeah, it's easy for families to understand if we've been this way for several months, since everything else is changing, then it might be just nice to keep that steady for them, and know how many people want to show up, but.
Hmm, well, that makes sense.
Sure, and then we'll probably just rearrange the configuration a bit for committee of the whole meeting.
Okay.
See how that works, if it does hurt, let me figure something out.
Do you have any curved tables?
What's that?
Do you have any, anything with curved or really small ones, or?
For kindergarten. We sat at those, for the subvaluation, we sat at, we had our own individual.
Yes, we did.
Okay, well, that actually moved together probably better, yeah.
We have closer individual tables, I mean, that's a lot.
Those were little chairs.
No downstairs or anything, but.
We'll explore what's available on the main floor.
Hopefully it just feels a little less.
Yeah, less spread out.
How far off the ground do you care about things?
Yeah, I remember they were short.
Well, so is anyone?
We get early learners table, they're very convenient to the.
Is, is anyone, you know, talk to David, has this topic been broached with, with David? I'm just wondering, I know he's, can be.
Right, not individually, I haven't, but I, you know, based on the sort of feedback of maybe staying this way, but maybe modifying the configuration and.
I'm sure he would have, want to have some input on this.
Sure, I can reach out to him.
All right.
All right, anything else on that topic? If not, we will move on to public comment, as, I'm sorry?
There's just, with the speaker back here or somebody with something, and I got scared.
You're okay?
Sorry.
I don't know where that feedback came from.
All right, is there any public comment, or maybe that was the public comment?
There is none.
Okay, then, future meeting dates, September 1, 2021, committee of the whole listed as TBD, but I think we're saying that's going to be here at Ames. Okay, September 15, 2021, regular business meeting, 7:00 PM, it also at Ames, the board will enter into closed session at 6:30, now, was that 6:30 or were we talking about?
We said 6:15, right, yeah, so I'm not sure, I'm not sure Kathy and I had.
Yeah.
Probably one of those continuing items that just comes up that way on the agenda.